I don't get the Zoom. My Zoom's not up. Oh, there it is. Okay.
What's up?
Oh, I just realized my Zoom. I gotta figure out how to turn my video on. Okay. How do we turn the video on? I always forget. Oh, there we go. Hurts over there messing with it. Okay, there we go.
Mayor, we're ready when you are.
Okay. Ready?
Are you good? If you hit the big one, then it'll be...
I think I'm good.
Make sure, okay.
Let me go back to my city. There we go.
You gonna send me my letter? See that grin over there, guys? I asked him if he's gonna send me my letter.
Good evening. We are here for the Lawrence City Commission meeting on February 21st. Welcome. And we will begin our meeting with instructions from Sherri, our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. If you were attending this meeting via Zoom, please ensure you are muted and your video is off when you are not actively participating in the meeting. This allows the active meeting participants to be seen on screen. When you are participating, please unmute and turn your video on. If you have any trouble, you can send a chat. All chats go directly to the meeting host. The city reserves the right to mute people or turn individual videos off to minimize distractions during the meeting. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and Cable Channel 25. When the mayor calls for public comment, those attending in person should approach the podium to indicate they wish to speak. The podium can be raised and lowered to ensure your comments are heard. Those participating via Zoom should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. Please leave your virtual hand raised until you are called on. Participants will be called upon in the order they appear on the meeting host's screen. Please state your name before speaking, and all comments will be limited to three minutes.
So, ready? All right, we'll begin. We'll start with item A, which is to approve the agenda. The city commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Any commissioner would like the agenda modified? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
I got a first and second, all in favor. Aye opposed. Pass is five to zero. We're onto general public comment. The public is allowed to speak on issues or items that are not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. Comments should be limited to issues and items germane to the business of the governing body. The commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Each person will be limited to three minutes. Any general public comment?
Yeah, this is Chris Flowers. Last week, I think I misspoke. I believe I said that a couple of commissioners wasted their first year. And I don't necessarily think that's true, because I was looking at it from my eyes. If you're someone who thinks the city's doing well and you don't think there needs to be change made, then it's not squandering. I mean, if you just want to be a yes man for the city, I mean, you're taking perfect use of your time. But if you're someone who wants to, who claims you're gonna be progressive, progressives want change. So, I mean, if you're not, if you're not fighting for change and you're a progressive, then you're wasting your, then you're squandering your first year. But if you just want to be a yes man for the city, you're making full use of your first year. Thank you.
Any other general public comment?
That book Rich hasn't read. Have you guys read it? Any of you order it? Police Accountability. Since he's here in the room, maybe he can answer why I haven't received the, I don't know, the results of the closed bias complaint that I made? That still hasn't been reported to me? That was included on the CPRB memo? Any of you guys ask him about that yet? It's failure in leadership. Straight-up failure in leadership. He got some public comments tonight on the written side of the public comments. One of those is an email string that I've been sending to Rich Lockhart every day since that CPRB meeting. Asking for my mail. When am I gonna get my mail? August 29th, 2021. Still haven't received those exonerations. He apologized in December, in January, for the December thing, saying, oh, it was our mistake. We're working to change that. We talked about that last week. Also in your agenda packet, in the written public comments, are some notes from other people talking about implicit bias. That the police come in and tell you that they're doing good on implicit bias. But when we hear on the scanner pages, they're referring to people as transient. What physical description meets the description of transient? Is that a physical description of somebody? And how does that impact the call? What does that have anything to do with it? Cops telling people to enter or go out to the homeless camp to help at your own risk? Those things are implicit bias, and they need to stop. City workers showing up out at the camp just to sit there and do nothing? I watched Mitch today sit way off down where the trailer park used to be, just sit there for over 45 minutes. I had to leave. I couldn't wait him out anymore. More than 45 minutes just sitting down there. Drove through the camp, went down to the end, and just sat. Didn't do anything to help anybody out. Your city workers out there don't seem to be given any instruction, other than the unsanctioned side is not something they need to worry about. So those people over there, we don't care about. I hope there's more people here tonight that are gonna talk about that. Because the complete failures in leadership around this town are getting absurd. And I do want to point out, for the record during this, that when I came in, I asked your police chief when I could get my letter, and all he did was give me a shit-eating grin. That says a lot about the attitude. Says a lot.
Any other general public comment?
Good evening. This is Jeremy Roth-Gushell, Mayor, Commissioners. Mayor, I have heard from folks in the community that they also would appreciate not calling we the people, the audience. And I've also heard other possibilities of the constituents. And I just do want to acknowledge that I heard that you did put in effort at the very end of the last city commission meeting. But I'm not sure many people heard that you were able to change that. Now, I know that that sounds like small details that are policing of language. But it's the roots of the attitude or the psychology of the relationship of the people to our governing structures, where we want to be respected in terms of our full place here. So I would just remind you and ask you again to not call us the audience, because of course you become the audience when we speak. It's an interchange. One other thing I want to briefly touch on is the question of the background of our city system in terms of the city manager commission system. Now, last week, I applaud you all for making a vote to change, to expand democracy and make it more representative in terms of our town. But I still think we need to look at the historical roots of the city manager system itself. This is not meant as a personal attack on our current city manager. But I found an article, this seems to be sort of not well-covered academically or historically. But in the Mainers, now this is from a Portland, Maine perspective, the article is titled "The Racist Roots and Results of the City Manager System of Government" by Samuel James, just published last October, October 2nd. And it talks about that the first experiments in the city manager system come out of Ku Klux Klan, white supremacist organized groups that wanted to put an end to the uprising of democratic flourishing in the black community in the United States. And now, I'm not saying that that is exactly what we came from here. But we do know that our city manager commission system was created during a time of serious cultural and civil rights ferment in this city. So I want us to look at that again as we go forward, about whether this system, at the very least, should be unpacked in terms of its historical resonance and where we might else want to go. Thank you.
Any other general public comment? On items that are not on the agenda? Aye. Come on up.
My name's Jessica Rich. I just wanted to say that...
Can we lower that, excuse me, the podium so we could see you?
Uh, this right here, or this right here?
Nope, I got you.
Okay. I'm like, how do I do this? Thank you.
You were good.
I was just gonna say that I've stayed at both behind Johnny Taverns. And then I've also been to the community building here on 11th and Vermont, I believe. That's the address. And the one that is by the jail, I've stayed in the back where they have the warming shelter part. And I feel like each of the different areas are doing a good job with what they have available to them. I don't know if there's any communication that's going on between the three spots. But I feel like there's certain things that other areas can do that one camp may not be able to do. Like, the community building on 11th and Vermont, they have hot water every night. And they have cups of ramen noodles, cups of instant mashed potatoes, some like granola bars. In the morning, when you wake up, they have coffee available every morning. They have hot cocoa mix, Gatorades, stuff like that. So, you know, and they put a certain amount out, and they make sure that everybody can come and get that. And they also make sure at night, everyone has at least one blanket, a mat to sleep on, and a pillow. And they also provide hygiene, you know, until they don't have any resources left. But they've done a very good job at being able to distribute them in small amounts, so that everyone has been able to get what they need. They don't have necessarily as much clothes. But if you go to the one behind Johnny Taverns, it seems like they have more of a supply of like, if you need clothes, or if you need bulk items like canned goods, stuff like that. And they have the tents that are available. And then, oh yeah, the Dare Center as well. I've gone there, and they have availability where you can get one small tent per year and a sleeping bag. I feel like if that was, if there was more of a supply of those smaller tents, maybe we wouldn't have such a population that was in the community shelters as well as the city property, because you'd be able to set your tent up. But there needs to be places, I don't know if there is or not, but there needs to be places where we, like, I feel like the city has said, okay, this isn't necessarily our, like, a property that we're gonna set up a shelter at. But from here to this point, and maybe like mark it out so people know, is okay for you to come back here and camp. And we're not going to bulldoze you. We're not going to, you know what I'm saying? You're not gonna receive reformation for, or reprimanded, you're not gonna be reprimanded for staying there, you know? And maybe, okay, sorry, maybe just like, tell them to keep it clean.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other general public comment? Could we fix the mic?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Thank you. Yeah.
Hi. My name is Lori Lindeman, and I'm a resident at Tenth City. My Indian name is Kipampeui, which is called for her from the Oglala Lakota Nation and from the Eagle Clan. I'm here today to tell you what happens down at Tenth City that you really don't know about. You hear about things and hearsay from so-and-so. But I'm not sure if you know the blood, sweat, tears that go into what goes on down there. Without the teamwork of Vance and Jen, we wouldn't have made it. Not to be, not to mention Jen at all. She worked hard. But I want to show you what Vance has done, so maybe he can get some compensation. First of all, he's always the last one to eat, and he makes sure everyone eats first. He's always interrupted during meals. And I didn't know if you knew, when it's below 25, one night it was 11 degrees out, and Vance would go out every two hours, and he'd hit our tents to make sure somebody would holler out and answer. And before one of these runs, he sat down at the foot of my bed. It was about 5:30. He said, I'm gonna make one more round. Mom, have you seen Norm? Norman Goodmoney is one of our residents there. I said, I saw him yesterday. He goes, I gotta check on Norm. And he ran out the door. And he's found Norm. He was carbon monoxide poisoned, very close to being gone. He was able to call 911, open his tent, pull the coals out, because Norm was trying to keep warm. Without Vance, we would have lost Norm. He was at the hospital all day. The ambulance came and took him. I'm not sure if you just know what he has done for us down there and what he's not, he feels unappreciated, because he's put a lot, he really truly cares, and he has empathy for everyone down there. And I'm just wondering if you just knew all the stuff that Vance does for them, just by, you know, not observing or just by hearsay? And I just want you all to be aware of that. But Jen and Vance have both done a wonderful job, and I appreciate them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other general public comment?
Hi, my name's Tiffany Kopp.
Hi, Tiffany.
I am actually part of the unsanctioned camp out there. I get treated differently than the sanctioned camp. The donations, I haven't received any since Jen's been gone, actually. Haven't received any of the food donations. There's a food tent out there now. Well, not like a tent, but there's like a trailer. They put a trailer out there when it first started, but now it's the pantry tent. Well, most of the good food, like, it's canned foods and stuff, but some of us don't like that kind of food. I'm not gonna lie. And then there's like chips. But some of those chips do get wet. They mold. It's not good. The good food is like bread. Sometimes there's lunch meat, you know? But those are in like the yellow trailer, and we're not allowed access to that at all. We're allowed access to it during, when a city worker is out there, or burnt ash. Sorry. Burnt ash, or the city is not always out there. Also, I wanted to touch base on that we need more staff out there during the night. That's when everything gets rowdy, when no one's out there to put down pressure on them. And that's when things get bad. There's cops called, there's people fighting, people drinking. It's just hell. So I was wondering if you guys could really consider putting staffing out there for the weekend and at night and stuff? Don't know. But it's just not okay out there without staff. And the staff ain't properly trained for everything out there either. I'm sorry. I've noticed that, there was this guy named Chris that was our monitor out there. He helped us, you know, as best as he could, but he wasn't equipped to know about our needs. He did not know anything about mental health that was going on out there. He felt like he was just shoved in an area that he didn't know anything about, so that wasn't a good call. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Tiffany. Any other general public comment? Not, we'll go to Zoom. Anything on Zoom? General pub...
Okay. Hi, I'm Jen, Jennifer Woolsey. First and foremost, thank y'all. I wanted to highlight some of the good stuff, because I feel like sometimes I'm up here just highlighting the negative stuff. Positive stuff. I was out there this weekend. I saw the, I'm sorry.
Scott, I was just trying, I couldn't hear you over the talking.
You're good. The partnership with LCS, I really appreciate that. They are trained. They are social, not necessarily social workers, but they do have that human service training, so that is great. So I do appreciate that. I took today off, because I'm working on getting 37 people food stamps while, before I have my own surgery. And so, why am I doing that? Because it needs to be done. So I still put in a lot of work out here for free. But I don't do that for a pat on the back, but I just wanted to let everybody know why I was out there today. I saw the two city workers out there. They were amazing. They were awesome. They were sitting in their car. They had no idea what they were doing. So I rolled up, and I introduced myself, and I said, hey, have you been trained? And they said, no. And I said, do you mind if I train you? And they said, sure. And they got out. And I walked them around, and I showed them around, and I introduced them to every single person on both sides of the camps. And I said, they want, you know, they want to know who's out here. They want to get to know you. They will listen to you if they know that you are part of their team. And so we, they were, like I said, they were amazing. They wanted to learn. I asked them about the expectations, you know? There used to be expectations that I wrote, but I don't know if they're still being implemented. So I asked, are you guys handing out tents? Do you guys hand out supplies? What do you do? And they said, no, we sit here. It's all we do. And I said, okay, let me give you a copy of the expectations that I used to use. And they said, is this what they're supposed to be following? I said, I don't know, but they're good questions to ask. And they said, good to know. We didn't know anything about this. And they said, okay, it's all right, though. I'm not mad at you, and I don't want you to be bashed, because I know that you're doing the best you can with what you're given. And so, like I said, they, all of a sudden, they said, someone came up and asked if they could get food from the trailer. And they said, oh, this trailer? I said, yeah. Big trailer got opened up. And the female worker looked at me and said, why is all this food in here? I thought this was supposed to go in the white trailer. I said, I have no idea. I don't work here anymore. She said, do you think I should put this in the white trailer? I said, you don't have to put all of it, you know? Let's save some, but maybe you should put some. So what I'm offering is this, for free. I'm going to go ahead and put a program together. I'm going to put a training together. It'll probably take less than nine days to get someone adequately trained with equity and everything that they need out there. And I'm gonna send it to the city manager's office, and they can choose to use it or not. But they do want to do a good job. They just need training. And remember, training is the one thing I left over, was the lack of training. Thank you.
Any other general, oh, hi, come on up. Nope, come on up. You're fine.
I'm not a camera person, so I don't wanna make this short. Just saying...
What's your name, sir?
My name's Mark.
I know, Mark.
Saying my last name, no offense, but just saying, I've been, pardon my language, by the way, and I've been through hell and back. Doesn't matter. My fiancee's locked up over bull crap. Jen, like, she's been doing like her best every single day to help us.
Yeah.
Like, come on. I get judged, just because I might look homeless or might be homeless. I get judged by people every day, because I stress. I basically, not trying to put my business out there, but I died over eight times over petty crap. And I stress. I get judged. I get yelled, like, come on, I have to defend myself and other people, like, other homeless people once in a while. I make sure the streets, like, come on, my homies are picking up the streets. Like, and like, no offense, but, come on. I get judged by law enforcement, no offense, but come on, I get harassed. I get described as a wrong person. And come on, I could get arrested for it if some lady didn't stop. And I can tell you exactly, it was during, I won't say back, I don't know, it's like a few months ago, when it was still warm out, like, before winter hit. Like, come on, this was up at Noodles and Company. Like, I'm 28 years old. I don't know if I'm gonna make it to my 29th or my 30th, hopefully. But I have like maybe six more months, and like, to my fiancee delivers. All I gotta say is, like, come on. This is bull, like, I really want to cuss up the storm, really bad. That's why I'm holding my tongue. Like, come on, I can be, like, pardon my language, I could be a prick. I can be an asshole. I could like, come on. Basically, people comes at me as a bad guy. I'm not a snitch. I don't say names. I take people's bull crap. People comes at me with weapons, to the neck, no joke. I don't need a weapon. Come on, I have people, like, I have people that live in houses that's snobby as hell. Oh, look at this homeless fuck. Talking about me, pardon my language, but dude. Some, like, come on, people just, like, y'all ever seen Facebook videos? And everything where, don't judge books, but, yeah. All I gotta say is, like, sorry for the, but...
Thank you, Mark. Any other general public comment from the audience? If not, we'll go to Zoom. Any other general public comment from the audience? If not, we'll go to Zoom.
Kevin Elliott.
Hi, Commissioner. Sorry, I can't be there tonight. First, I want to say thank you very much for passing the Equity Program for Source of Income Discrimination. It's made a, it's going to make a positive step in Lawrence and you guys did a good job. That needs to be said. I want to say, though, that there's, that I brought forth a series of recommendations that the city, and gave to the city that they can use to help improve services to people who are unhoused. I've been very disappointed in the leadership since I've started these conversations. Just this last week, I've noticed that the police department decides that they have to use the term possible transient when talking about somebody who is committing some sort of disruptive act. So they, so it's important to the police department to identify someone as potentially homeless. And the second they did that, then the Facebook pages light up saying, oh, look what all the homeless people are doing. You need to get a hold of your leadership. These are people. These are not statistics. I have asked that there be more peer leadership. I have asked for a series of recommendations. I've not heard back from any one of you. And I know the city manager's only had it for a week and his assistant is gone, so I'm sure he'll get back to me as well, but. You got, the city manager said to me, this is really difficult. It's a new thing and it's hard to do. You're right, it is. When you mess up, look at those people out in your audience. Look at those people in the gallery. Those lives are the ones that depend on you getting it right. And when you get it wrong, they pay. Step up. Thank you.
Stephen Watts.
Right, thank you. Is the audio functioning?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, what, what this other fellow was saying, it is about money and people's socioeconomic status. And you know, we've got just one problem after another with policing in Lawrence. First, we make a toothless citizens review board, which we have somehow made even more useless, much to the delight of the police cabal in Lawrence and Douglas County, the state of Kansas, and elsewhere across the nation, given the metaverse and all the liquor infused conventions police people go to. I do believe our town spends town money to send cabal members to these extravaganzas. What is going to come next as overplayed, overpaid police administrators revel in their self-given military-like ranks is their call for yet more police to thug about our town? Already, they claim they are short-staffed. Let me suggest there is no short-staffing. There is a significant failure in time management and progressive thinking. There isn't even a sluggish and sloth-like movement to change in how our town correctly uses its police people. It's past time we Americans, we Lorenzians, find a new way to police in our town and community. Something similar to the way our neighbors in, to the north, Canada, or are you European Union Nations friends, carry about business. We need guardians and not storm troopers who show up en masse using officer safety as an excuse. Citizen safety from police abuse is what we must now begin to focus on, particularly given the beating of a citizen to death by a street corner full of police in Memphis. That dead man got protected and served. And how? Thank you.
Any other public comment on Zoom?
No, Mayor.
All right. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. Considered under one motion and approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak on an item that has been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. Any items that the commissioners want to pull?
Yes, Mayor, C4A.
All right. Any others? If not, anybody in the audience want to pull an item?
Public.
Any, any items pulled?
Public.
How about Zoom?
Pull C1. And let's, Chris, which part are you getting on?
Yeah, I'm getting one too. I'd like C8A, about the four-year terms.
Okay. How about on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom want to pull something?
D4 please.
Mr. Watts, do you mind saying that one more time?
I'm sorry, C as in Charlie.
Oh, C.
Thank you.
Any others? If not, we'll bring it back up here. And we've got C1A, C4A, and C8A.
Move for approval of the consent agenda with the exception of C1A, C4A, and C8A.
Second. Got a first and a second, all in favor. Any opposed? Passes five to zero. We'll start with C1A. City commission meetings, minutes.
Last week, I pointed out that the mission, the minutes from the previous meeting were missing 37 seconds. Today, I got an email saying that that meeting was missing a few frames. Quite a bit more than a few frames. Also blaming that on the bitrate for your livestream. You're blaming your minutes problems on a tech company that you choose to do business with. That's not appropriate. Fix your tech problems. If you can't run a livestream and keep the bitrate up enough that there aren't 37 seconds missing out of a meeting, then record the damn thing and then post it. But you can't have a permanent record that's missing parts of the meeting. I'm gonna pick up on his point because he makes a really good point, Jeremy does. We're not the fucking audience. We're the people that run this. We're the public. And as you've seen, when you guys start screwing up and the public comes in here, some pressure can be applied. But I want to second what he's saying, Madam Zar, because the audience stuff needs to
Okay, we'll bring it up here. Any questions on this or? Hang on, second, hang on. Anything from, from the commission? Now we'll get public comment on it.
I gotta echo Madam Zar. I understand it may take some practice to address the public, your constituents, with proper respect, but it's not okay to do it over and over again. It begins to feel disrespectful. It doesn't breed a good relationship between we, the people, and our public servants and our government. Additionally, I do also want to echo what Michael-
Are you talking about the meeting minutes right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. I want to echo what Michael was talking about in terms of if you all are going to depend on a full audiovisual record that you've outsourced to a corporation that has its own non-first amendment protected content restrictions, then it, at the very least, it has to be perfectly full every single time. I would also point out that just the fact that there are still these kinds of glitches is more proof positive that we still need a fully fleshed out, at least a transcript. And I know Commissioner Finkelde has been looking into how you all might make a transcript at least of the full video that could be then searchable. It could also be that you could create chapters on your YouTube video so people who are interested, members of the public or academics or journalists, could search for specific issues. Right now, it's very difficult to scroll through. That would be a fairly simple way to document exactly in a somewhat written record what issues come up when. And then finally, in terms of the written record, if you really do go look back 10 years ago at the controversies that were happening in front of a commission at that point that was, four out of five had been apparently bought off by an eventual felon developer. One of those four who had been apparently bought off eventually became the mayor and became convicted felon also. And this, we also, at this point, and this is why I think this is related to minutes in a full record, we still have the city legal team that came into power at that time in power now. And they were also the ones who facilitated that eventual felon developer to apparently get non-bid contracts from the city in a way that was obviously against the written letter of the law. And this is all on the transcripts of the notes at that time. Go look at it, 2013. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo the previous speaker. We definitely, I'm okay with minutes, but I'd prefer a transcript because what I do is when I'm looking up stuff, I type in something with like, like, say example, there's that, when Booley and Dan had their disagreement. I remember Booley going, Dan, it's our job to endure your invective. And what I would do, if I was looking for that moment, I would look up the word invective in transcripts and keep going through meeting till meeting till I found that moment. But if you have it as it is now, where we rely on the video, that means I'm gonna have to be watching hours worth of video because I can't just type in a word and search for the moment I'm looking for. So that's why we need a transcript, I think. I mean, and if there's, I think there's probably ways where's like computers just do it by themselves. So I don't think it, I, if there's a way where it won't cost the city much money, I definitely go for it because it's gonna make the public's job so much easier when they're trying to look up stuff that you guys have said and what's come up before when we're making our arguments. So I would just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this item from Zoom? If not, from-
Stephen Watts.
Yeah, I, thank you. It's, yeah, these minutes are insufficient. They are inadequate. They, they cannot be voted in as acceptable because they are so sterile, sanitized, and wholly useless. It is offensive that highly paid executives in our town government, that is to say, the executive team, unquote, openly state, we don't have to do that. Oh, my goodness. Hey, man, 1995, dragon to speech software, text to speech software. That was when I was first playing around with it. I'm sure that something better exists. Help me to understand why this is not made into minutes. It was done 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago. It has nothing to do with staff time. It has to do with a desire to eliminate what went on during the course of decisions being made. There is no he said, she said, or even a discourse about, there might have been controversy about one decision over another. It's, of course, when you're just an audience member, it doesn't matter. And I have got to opine in this few moments that, wow, these guys are finally figuring out that this town commission has never wanted town participation. Not really. There was a verbalization of it, but it, these meetings went on and on and on without participation and that's why the town is in the mess it is in. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment on Zoom?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Any thoughts on this?
I mean, we've talked about it before. I mean, I think it's something that I personally think that the video is better than the minutes we used to have because you can better see what's happening, understand what's happening, and better record what's there. However, I do agree that it's very hard to search and very hard to find what you're looking for from past minutes. So I have been looking some at, you know, some of the transcription services YouTube does and so forth, though I would say I am not sure, you know, when you talk about the cost, the services to make sure that those transcripts are word for word, you know, that becomes very expensive to, you know, to have good language. So I'm not sure that those would ever make the actual minutes unless someone is watching and correcting the words that people say, something's muted or whatever. But I do think it's a possibility that it would be a supplement, not as official minute meetings, but transcripts as it were, that could be something that could be used that as a, as a companion to the minutes that could be searchable. Now, that being said, is there probably a service out there that you can pay somebody to do the transcriptions, of course. It would be that amount. I'm not sure I would go all the way for that, but I do think there's possibilities there. But as it stands, I support the minutes because I do reflect, they do reflect the action items we're taking.
Any other discussion on this?
I mean, given the, I mean, I wholly, I agree with Commissioner Finkelde on it, but, you know, especially with transcripts potentially being a supplement. But, I mean, until we get to that place, I, I, I agree with the minutes that we have, but, I mean, it sounds like he's done some diving and at least made some, you know, effort in that regard, but if the, if there's something, if some of that could come to fruition, I, I wouldn't mind seeing it. But as it stands now, I'm all right with the minutes.
Okay. Any else?
I'll just say real quick, we've said it several times in several iterations. I've said it several times in several iterations. When it comes to minutes, Uncle Henry says you record the action, what is done in the meeting, not what is said. And Commissioner Finkelde reiterated that today.
Yep.
So I think if we can, I think we've gotten to a point now that we've stopped conflating minutes with transcription. And if there's action, it needs to be said. If it's a move, if it's the will of this governing body to have staff look into transcription services, and I think that needs to be articulated. If not, I think it's important to educate our governing body as well as educate the community to know that minutes reflect the actions, what is done. It doesn't reflect what is said. And based on what we have, we have good minutes. Transcription is a whole nother thing. And that's what I hear, that's what I'm hearing from the public. Some individuals in the, some of our public are stating that they're wanting transcription. But what we vote on each week are minutes. And they are minutes as defined by Uncle Henry, according to Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised, 12th Edition.
Okay, any other? Not, do we need to vote on this one, Sherri?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I guess for motion. If there's no other discussion.
Move to approve the February 14th, 23 city commission meeting minutes.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor. Aye opposed. Passes five to zero. Item C4A. This is, consider approving appointments as recommended by the mayor.
Yes, Mayor. On this one, we have appointments for a community police review board as well as affordable housing advisory board. I'm speaking in regards to the community police review board. There are some items that I've, some action items that I've shared with our executive staff and in regards to some action items that I do believe current CPRB members need to go through before we can continue to move forward with any CPRB as well as community work group projects. We haven't been able to execute those. And so until I feel like, until we can get those action items reflected and agreed upon, then I just want, I don't want to vote on any, appointing of any members as of right now. I know that CPRB is scheduled to meet, I think it's on the 8th, the 8th or the 9th. So we have a meeting on the 7th. If we, that gives staff a couple more weeks to get those items to us. And if they can do that by our March 7th meeting, I'll be more than happy to vote on these appointees. But until then, I will not- But until then, I will not, I can't affirm these, these appointees at this time.
Yeah. Any questions? Not, we'll take public comment.
Yeah, this, this is Chris Flowers. I mean, I don't know about the appointments, but it seems like we need people being appointed to the police review board. And my question is going to be, there's also the, the police overs, that, that new, I forget what it's called. Is it the police oversight board that's, is that what it, or I'm not, I'm not allowed to look back, so, sorry. But anyway, I think in the article that they haven't met because they're having problems with their membership also, I thought the paper, basically why I'm asking is if we don't appoint anyone tonight to the police review board, is that also going to set back the, the police oversight board? Because, I mean, doesn't some of their membership rely on members from the police review board being on that board? And if that board's already been delayed, which I'm pretty sure it has, I don't know if it's a month or two months now, but if that, if that board's already being delayed because there aren't pe, because they don't have members, and part of them having members relies on there being members in the police review board, it seems like we need to be more emphasis on getting people appointed to the police review board. Thank you.
Other public comment on this?
Can someone enlighten me on these action items? Because they're not on the appointment list.
Oh, yeah.
What action items are needed before the mayor can make an appointment? And how dare you try to slow this process down some more? What are you going to do? I told somebody a while back that the CPRB has been doomed by design. And that's really what it is. For four years, the design of it has doomed its entire process. So if this appointment doesn't happen tonight, will it delay things? Yes, it's going to delay things. Are things already delayed because of the CPRB missing members? Yes. Things are already delayed. There were meetings canceled. Are you missing community advisory members as well? I think you are. That's another problem. But the idea that you guys would delay appointments to the CPRB, which has, you know, maybe it's not a bad idea for you to delay the appointments to the CPRB. I'm going to back up. Maybe it's not a bad idea to delay that. Why doesn't this commission take some responsibility for that process and drag that thing back in here and write a real ordinance? CPRB members cannot investigate. They have no investigative authority. They do not get to independently review the case itself. This is in the bylaws, folks. They do not get to independently review the case itself. What they get to review is the police's investigation of the complaint. Right? So they investigate themselves, they find there's no wrongdoing, and then the police, the police review board gets to review those documents that show that there's no wrongdoing. Nice. So yeah, maybe we need to delay the appointments, and this commission needs to actually write a freaking ordinance. Because the ordinance that you have in place right now, there is no oversight. Oversight. There is no oversight to that oversight. The review, the review is reviewing what they've decided already. That's not an oversight process. The citizens need an oversight process. I've got two names of the, of two of the shooters on 21st Street. When I get the third one, I'm going to come in here and I'm going to have a conversation with you because we're going to find out who dumped his mag. Because that scares the shit out of the public. When you have five officers on scene, three fire their weapons, I can look wherever I want in this room, Mayor, three fire their weapons, one of those dumps his mag while the other two fire one shot each. Police Review Board, what are you doing?
Other public comment on this item?
This is Jeremy Roth Kuchel. I very much agree. It is apparent that the so-called review board was set up to fail. It's, that's become obviously clear. And when I put that together with the history, the actual structurally racist history of the city manager commission forum that goes all the way to the top of the country, really, Woodrow Wilson, infamous KKK white supremacist supporter, was one of the early supporters of that forum, I begin to see a situation in our government where we, the people, are being managed as an audience. Now it seems the people are being managed, remember, that, that term actually comes out of slavery, really, when there became intermediaries between the slaveholders and the slaves. They were the managers, okay? We, the people, are being managed in relationship to having proper oversight of the police chief. I would, I would ask the commission to, to command the chief to call for a real public police oversight board. I was very interested to read this book, Police Accountability, The Role of Citizen Oversight, by Samuel Walker. I, Michael showed me a few paragraphs. They were right on in terms of what a real citizen-oriented oversight police board would look like. And what we've seen, obviously, is we do not have enough oversight. The Bradley Williams situation, that was allowed to fester and fester and fester, passed amongst different law enforcement agencies in our area. He was infamously known. Michael was exposing him on, on Citizen Press. And it came down not to actually his victims, who had reported him over and over and over again, them being women. Their calls were never really answered properly. Inside of the Lawrence Police Department, there should have been male police officers who, they knew what he was doing, and it came down to female police officers to actually do some whistleblowing on the inside. Now, the fact that we have this quote-unquote review board that was passed under the guise of racial justice, and it's using racial justice and bias-based policing to limit the inquiry of the public's ability to see into what our police department is doing, and then, more importantly, to give it oversight.
Time. Any other public comment on this item? How about on Zoom?
Stephen Watts.
Hi. Yes, you know, I pulled this item in the original, and the reason that I pulled it was because I had submitted a letter about the recommendation for the CPRB member, and I have learned that I may be in error on that with respect to the credentials of that individual. They're in my reason for pulling this. I believe that the town commission needs to produce a rationalization why somebody is being appointed, and that includes their credentials and why that person has stepped forward to do this. Okay, it's great to say that you volunteer this, that, and the other. Hey, I've been volunteering for the Community Police Review Board since its inception, and I understand, well, irrespective, I'm just saying that in the future, could you please identify why you've, I recommended somebody? I did what I thought was some junior league due diligence, and, you know, if the individual does not want to change their LinkedIn resume, I don't know what to do. Anyway, so for that, it's not correct. I, I shouldn't have sent that letter. On the other side of the coin, I don't make any apologies for it on a political side because I'm not informed. That's because the way that people are put on these boards is a joke. It's, it has not been functional in the past. That is why we are now over, that is why we are researching, constricting. Now we're going to take 4,000 community boards and make them into three, which further constricts the ability of the public to say, this is what we need to do as we continue to move forward. And Commissioner Sellers, what a load of malarkey. What are the action points? What are they? And you're wrong about the minutes. You know what? We had Justice Cracker, Hugo Black, lifetime Ku Klux Klan member, and Supreme Court Justice, who was tantamount to the Fourth Amendment crippilization with the Terry stop process. All of these things are issues that need to be discussed inside a citizens review board, which controls the police department. It tells the police what to do, when to do, if to do. It writes the policies and procedures. It reviews the complaints. There's no question that we need the professionalism of the police community, but their failure, their repeated failure to embrace new ways of policing inside a peace-loving community like Lawrence, Kansas underscores a bankruptcy in leadership by self-identified progressives. Please, this has gone on for six-plus years. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment on Zoom? Commission. Well, I'd like to have a vote on this. I think the candidates are good. They, and also, it would give, it'll give them time to start being exposed to how the training goes for these board members, and so they could be more prepared for their first meeting.
Well, Mayor, I never said that the candidates were not qualified. I know there are some matters in regards to CPRB that I'm awaiting answers to, and until I get those answers, I don't feel comfortable appointing anyone to the CPRB. So I do believe, I stated before, as we have a meeting on the 7th, CPRB is scheduled to meet on the 9th. We're missing a week and a half. I do believe in the bylaws. CPRB gets six months, gets six months to produce training for one activity and 30 days for another, so we're not impeding too much between the next meeting, which is in April. They would have 30 days to complete that set training based on their appointment, so there's, there's really no delay per se. And as I've stated, I do believe the candidates are qualified. There are items that I would like to hear answers back from before I make an appointment. While it is your duty to review and to produce candidates for appointment, it is our duty as commissioners, however much we take of it, to do our due diligence to make that confirmation affirmative. At this time, that is not an affirmative for me. But a roll call vote, I have no, I have no comments to that.
Excuse me. Sir, you're out of order. You're out of, you're out of order. You're out of order. Sir, you're out of order, and this is your warning. Sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
He had a point of order. He had a point of order.
I had completed my thought.
Was that it? Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners?
The Roberts rules don't count?
Well, I would just say, I mean, I think the CPRB is an active members, board at the moment that does not have enough, doesn't have enough members, and the mayor has appointed people, has nominated folks who I think are qualified. You know, certainly if there was a discussion on the 7th or some other time about the CPRB and otherwise, certainly take that up. But until then, I'll go ahead and support the, the appointment so we can get the people on the board and move it forward.
Any other discussion? No more dis-
All right, I'm trying, I'm just trying to cogitate. I apologize, Mayor. I do think there's a lot with this board to unpack. This isn't necessarily the space for that, for us to give direction on what we do or don't think's happening there, any of the nuanced things that there might be, the places where we need to give direction. How can we make space for ourselves to do that? I do feel like there's, there's, there's been a lot of lack of direction or infighting, but I don't, I don't think right here, appointing these two people is the way to take control of that or to, to take responsibility, to take responsibility for, for which part is ours. So how, how do you, how can we make space to do that? Yeah, there's, and interesting, but I think, in the long run, questionable idea that the city commission should take responsibility for it. Sounds cool when you say it like that, but I can tell you right now that it doesn't matter what you do, it will lack transparency. So I, I just want to make sure we, we give some kind of real direction here, make space for it on commission items.
You mean like the public knowing secret action points?
Yeah, what are those? That's what we're trying to find out.
Sir, I would like you removed from the building, please. Officer?
Mayor, did you want to take a recess?
You're going to throw me out of the building?
Yeah, I want a recess. I want a recess and have this gentleman removed from the, from the meeting.
Are we allowed to know those action items? Secret, secret action items, and I'm getting thrown out. Secret, secret action items, and I'm getting thrown out.
Be back. So where were we? Do you have any other thoughts?
Any continued discussion?
I do. I do want to apologize, Commissioner Sellers. I did not mean to imply that you didn't think these were qualified candidates. That was my intention, sorry.
Point, point received and friendly. No, I, my, my, I have no other thoughts on this. Like I said, I've stated that I think it's in the matter of interest in taking a vote on this, I would ask that these items, that we vote on these individually.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we can do that. So Sherri, we're going to vote on these individually?
Okay.
So could I have a motion?
I move to appoint Brenda Clary and Gregory Temple, two partial terms on the Community Police Review Board for terms expiring on August 31st, '24.
Second.
I got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Got a four to one, passes four to one.
I'd move to appoint Mark Bueller to a term that expires on the Affordable Housing Advisory Board on 11/21/25, designated for the Chamber of Commerce Representative.
Second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes five to zero. The last item is C8A.
Okay, this is Chris Lowers. I, I hope you all got what I sent in on this item. It's too long to go through it all, but I just want to point some stuff out. I definitely think we should be keeping this to two, the first two get four years and just go into the next election just having two incumbents. Also, I was told, well, we need the three because we need to split up at the next thing, so it's three commissioners each election. But I think that's incorrect because it's not six you're splitting up, it's seven. Like, you're not taking into account the mayor. And here's what's interesting, what you're switching to now, technically, if you all decide to keep voting for Lisa Larson and the new hybrid system fails, you could be voting just for Little John as, in the next election cycle, it could be Lisa Larson as mayor and Bart Littlejohn as a commissioner, followed the next election by three commissioners. So if that's allowed, why wouldn't one mayor and two commissioners in the new hybrid system, followed by four commissioners in the next election? And what you would do is you would elect someone to a two-year, a special, a special term for two years that would happen at the same time on the regular ballot, so it's not going to cost much more money. And then the main thing is, how does appointing someone to a district represent the district? Like, how does that benefit the district if the voters of that district, if, if that person being appointed did not finish in the top three? Because that's, that's a possibility. Because I believe last election Commissioner Sellers did poorly in her, in her area, but did very well in the East. So if she was, if she was to finish in a position where she gets appointed to a district, it's possible she could finish fourth or fifth and still be appointed. Like, and that's considered failing in my book. If you finish fourth and fifth in a six-person election in the district, why should you get appointed? Why, why shouldn't it be a special election instead of appointing someone who, who the voters rejected? That, that's not fair. And also, how would it be, if I run, how would it be fair to me to run at, to run at an at-large election and then halfway through, I'm told I have to live in my district? When I, I pay right now $450 for a one-bedroom apartment. What if that goes away? Am I going to be able to find another apartment in, in my district for that price? So I'll have more to say about this if we go past this.
Okay. Anything from the commission on that before we take it to public comment? Nope. Public comment on this item? Any public comment on Zoom?
Stephen Watts?
Hi. You know, on a surface level, this is, this, this matter is somewhat harmless. However, if, there's always these "however," you know. There is a reason for having it staggered. I understand. Well, let's back up again, like I always do. Who are the three people that wrote this memo? Finally, instead of the ubiquitous staff, we see the actual owners, Mr. Owens, Mr. Larkin, and Ms. Wheeler, and I appreciate their efforts. However, town government does not exist to simplify their lives. I understand it is complex working with new elected officials who have, quote, "a learning curve," unquote. That's part of a check and balance for the public as opposed to being roughshod, being run over, roughshod by a commission that is all, I mean, a group of people that are all hunky-dory. It's just something to think about. You know, I really haven't spent a whole lot of time on these matters as well as the one to turn Lawrence into, I'm not quite sure what's going, what's going on government-wise, but wow. I have a real fear that the people with money are going to be able to gain more access and that the people without money are going to receive less access, like it or not. The COVID pandemic has assisted in the separation between the haves and the have-nots, and that disparity only grows. It will grow in government, too. What did they say back when? Beware the Ides of March. Thank you.
Any other public comment on Zoom?
No, Mayor.
All right. Any discussion? Not, I would entertain a motion.
Can we unpack some of the questions that Chris Lowers was bringing up? Because I feel like there was some confusion about what an appointment is and what a district does in our scenario. Was I getting, I just, because if you get elected to your district, you're elected to your district. You walked those blocks. You, you gained the favor of your people in that district. You weren't appointed by the mayor. You were elected by your people. That's the advantage that's been touted, to me anyway, all this time. So I just want to make sure I understand. I feel like I had not, not sure we were on the same page there. It is true that if we vote this and the voters decide they're not interested in changing our government, it'll be two-on, three-on, however you say that. I'm not particularly bothered by that. Maybe others are. But as regards some of the concerns that he was bringing up, that is addressed specifically by running in your district. Am I confused here?
Yeah. Well, first I'd say the, the, what's on the, what's, what's on the agenda is just the four-year one.
Yes.
Not the other one. But I think what Chris is talking about is the way in this election of '23, what would happen in '25 to the people who are elected. And under the proposal, it would put the people, whoever was the top vote getter would become an automatic representative to a newly formed district.
Okay.
So they never would have, they never would have run in the district.
Thank you. I was having a hard time. Thank you.
And so that, I think, is the concern of, of Chris. I mean, obviously, there has to be a way, you know, to, under election law, if someone is elected to a four-year term, you have to keep them there. So you had to come up with a solution, and I think the solution Randy came up with, it's a one-time issue. Thereafter, it would be, as you say, you'd be running in a district or at large. So it would be a one-time issue, has to be solved one way or the other. So I, I mean, I appreciate, I mean, I can, I can see Chris's point. The opposite could be true. I mean, there's not a perfect system when you're walking a shift. I mean, as the, as the county saw, when you go from three to five districts, people got elected in one district, and then their whole district is shifting on them. And so, you know, Chris, I hear you. It's not a perfect system, but, but I don't think any of them all, when you, whenever you're making that shift. And so I support that. As to the four-year terms, I mean, I, I mean, Chris, you're right. We do not have to do it that way. But I think, you know, to the point of, I, I think four-year terms are better, and I think that, again, under our current system, the way it works, you can flip the entire board in two years. With the four-year mayor being off-cycle, even as you said, you can only do four and three. And so you, the best you can do is flip the whole board every four, every fourth, I mean, every fourth year or every other election. So otherwise, if you have the two-year terms, then you're really going to get off in the math in the third and fourth year, in the third and fourth election thereafter. So anyway, Chris, I hear you. I mean, I can, I can see your concerns, but I, I do think it's a, it's a good step forward, and I think the four years is, is the right move.
And I don't disagree in that logic. Commissioner Finkel, I think when you, I, I separate the directly elected from the, so with the four and three, you're including the directly elected. I don't include the directly elected in that. The cycle is of the commissioners. So that gives us that balance that, that you stated, and I think in what was proposed to us and how to define or decide who, based on placement and votes, who is a district and who would serve as an at-large. I think we have the closest, I guess, near-close significant solution that we have, but we're also not taking into account individuals. So we can say this is not perfect. It can be more perfect, but we're taking out, what we're not accounting for in this is the variable of the individual. We don't know in four years from now who, if anybody, based on what's a district, what's at-large, if they will run again. And so all of these things have, you know, a bit of a human factor to it, which is what makes it not perfect. But as far as germane is to what we're voting, what we're discussing and, and needing to vote on today, that's a discussion to have for another time. But as far as the four-year terms, again, I, you know, you always have to understand history of why things happen. And with history, if, if you create a practice of something, it becomes very traditionalist, and tradition doesn't mean it has to stay that way. It means you assess it to see whether it creates equitability. Is it creating equality? Is it helping with the function of government and the efficiency of a governing body? And so I hope those are variables that were taken into play when we all discussed this and as far as, until the people decide whether or not in 2024 they want a directly elected mayor and a hybrid system of commissioners. I think this is something that is not only equitable, but it also will give us that sense of cohesion and relationship-building that a government body, body needs to be efficient and effective policymakers, developers, and advocates. So.
So I just, yeah, just want to make sure I understand this. If we, once we get past the, if it, if it passes on, on the ballot, that is going to the-
Mayor, point of order. I, we're, we're voting on the four-year term as it stands here. You're speaking to-
Actually, no, I'm going to get, I'm going to talk about this, these, okay.
Okay.
Is, then every, every two years, you'll still have, will still have an election with three of the commissioners. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's what, that's what, that was what I tried to ask. So, okay. If there's no other discussion?
Hey, I'm, I'm going to get thrown out, but-
Chris.
Why is it that we're doing it, the top two get districts, not at-larges, since it's an at-large election?
Officer.
I'm getting thrown out, and I am leaving.
All right. There's no further discussion? As for a-
I move that we adopt on second and final reading ordinance number 9967, amending section 1-206 of the City Code establishing a four-year term for all persons elected to serve in a governing body.
Second. Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes five to zero. Okay, we are now on to the work session. The work session provides an opportunity for the city commission to discuss items in greater detail. The commission will take no binding action on these items presented during this time. Work session topics are eligible for live public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on a work session item will be limited to three minutes for comments. Our one item on here is receive the strategic plan update from unmistakable identity outcome team. Here with us. Oops. There we go. And, boom. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I'm Derek Rogers, Director for Parks and Recreation and Team Champion for Unmistakable Identity. I'm sure you'll recognize the picture from last year's March Madness celebration, and a much more probably appropriate picture right now would be last week's downtown Lawrence community celebration, the KC Chiefs win last week. As an unmistakable city, we are looking forward to March Madness and are making preparations for the Spring KU community celebrations. What you see here are our four 14 key performance indicators. Our Unmistakable Identity team has been updating our metrics, and they can be viewed online at our website, City Strategic Plan website. As part of the updating process, we recognize three of our progress indicators needed additional analysis and adjustments. With this, and with the hope of the ETC community survey data, our Unmistakable Identity team developed a subgroup of staff and committee stakeholders to review UI four, five, and six. Tonight, we'll hear from Steve Novak from the Watkins Museum, Kalina Coleman, Organizational Equity Coordinator, and Porter Arnill, Assistant Parks and Recreation Director for Arts and Culture. These folks have spent quite a bit of time analyzing the TC, ETC data in regard to these three, three KPIs, and will provide us with greater insight. I will now turn the presentation over to Porter to get us started. Porter, all yours.
Thank you, Derek. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Happy to be on this side of the podium for a change. So we are looking at UI four, five, and six. And what we discovered on each of these is that UI four is percent of residents who have attended an event in the past year. What we recognize is that data for this is in development. We need to better define what we mean by event because there is a plethora of events that occur, and obviously, we can't measure every, every one of those. And so we want to add some sort of tracking measure during those, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. For UI five, percent of Black, Indigenous, and people of color, BIPOC residents rating the community as welcoming. Data's in development there, and we'll talk more about that. And then percent of residents who believe their culture is celebrated in the community via festivals, parades, and events came in at 40.7%. So we recognize we need to do some work there. And we were able to use the ETC survey to find out a little bit more information on that, and we'll also talk about that. I am here to talk about UI four, percent of residents who have attended an event in the past year. Currently, this progress indicator doesn't track the data in a usable fashion. So what we realize is that while individual organizations and Explore Lawrence track related data that is useful, it's not specifically geared just to track residents. And because we have residents on this- we have residents on this, but this is good data, this is data that we want to get, and so we're looking at ways of, of handling this. Kudos to Steve Novak for his help on this. We know that organizations track this. What we think we can do is come up with a selection of events that represent events in Lawrence, and have individual surveys done during those events. We did this for America, for the Americans for the Arts, Arts and Economic Prosperity. We did what were basically exit surveys, just having volunteers go and check off boxes on a, a document. We can also do this digitally. So it's a matter of sitting down, getting an inventory of events, if you will, and then going in and selecting key events to determine the best way to track this data. So that's what we're planning to do, and through that, we'll have a standard for these events, and that way, going forward, we'll always be tracking the same information as we move forward. So that's what we want to do for that, and I will pass it off to, I believe Kalina is online. Oops, I gotta need to fix my other hand.
Hi. Good evening, good afternoon, Commissioners, Kalina Coleman. I want to speak a little bit to the Unmistakable Identity Progress Indicator number five, and that focuses on percent of Black, Indigenous, and people of color BIPOC residents rating the community as welcome, welcoming, I should say. We did go ahead and use the ETC data, and we filtered the data to capture non-Wat respondents under the diversity, I feel welcome in the community question. So we, it, it was in the combined random and over-sampling data, and we were able to come up with a very robust sampling size, if you will, of 332 records. But I do want to add an asterisk with that, and let you know, that is not, for us, that is not a viable, reliable pool that we want to stand on. We definitely want a larger pool than that, or, or a greater, greater numbers in the survey. So, with that in mind, though, we do need somewhere to start. So I do want to note that this just shows an overall satisfaction, and by satisfaction, we took the sum of the satisfied plus the very satisfied, and used that to represent satisfaction, and we got a rating of 69.7%. Now, for this particular indicator, we did not have a target goal set, and so we do want to kind of use this as a baseline survey, and of course, we'll figure out ways into making that survey more robust, but we do want to use this as a baseline survey to hit a target. Now, theoretically, when it comes to equity, I'm gonna stand on always reaching for a 100% target, but at the same time, I want to be realistic, and I want us to have goals that we can make along the way to reach for. So with that baseline of 69.7%, we decided through, looking at the survey, that we'd set a target for 75% moving forward, this year moving forward. And then, you know, of course, we'll make those adjustments as, as we see fit. I do just want to mention that we, we like the strategies that we have under there right now, but we feel like we needed to target a, a little bit more and add a couple more strategies. So right now, we have develop and support initiatives that engage underserved and unrepresented communities, and then we also have provide accessible, diverse, and inclusive parks and recreation programs, and amenities for all ages and abilities, with a specific focus on historically marginalized communities. So from our ETC survey, and the question, and what, what we decided that we're really trying to get answered here, and what we're trying to attack, we think we also need to add develop, developing marketing and outreach strategies that are geared towards specific populations. So really cutting, you know, getting, getting nitty-gritty with who we're targeting specifically and not leaving it so broad. Also, we want to go ahead and share more information about what the city does support, and what we are doing, going forward with events, so that we are getting that recognition, and that we're being transparent and communicating how, what, what moves we are really making. And I think in that case, when people are going to answer surveys, they have a better idea of what we're trying to add on their surveys, based on the communication efforts that we've made. So, yeah, I'll go ahead and let Steve take it forward.
Hi, I'm Steve Novak, the Director of the Douglas County Historical Society and Watkins Museum of History. And for UI six, the percent of residents who believe their culture is celebrated in the community, this was another question that was added for the very first time to the ETC. We had, there was a slight discrepancy in the way the question was asked. In the survey, the question was asked as efforts are made to represent their culture, not celebrate. So we, we will need to make an alignment there to make sure that the data we report reflects the, the way the question is asked. And this, this question being new, it did allow us to establish a baseline, which is 40.7%, but with, it also, there was a circumstance that had us ask a few questions too, and that was the particularly high rate of neutral responses, which is unusual in the survey. People generally have a strong opinion on either side, and it suggests that perhaps the newness of the question means that people might not be used to maybe thinking about their culture in connection with community events and celebrations, and that in, in moving forward, one of the things we need to do is create stronger links between the events that are happening and the cultures that are being celebrated. It also provides the different cultural organizations and event planning organizations, I think, to work more in concert with each other, to assure that a range of different cultures are celebrated in the events that are planned every year, and also that, that we combine our efforts to, to in, in, increase awareness of particular communities that we are looking at their heritage and, and recognizing the contributions that they make in our communities. And I think that's it for me. There we go.
That's it. And so, we wanted to pose this for you all, and see if you had any thoughts you wanted to share on this, to help guide us going forward.
Can someone tell me exactly, in the last one, what the question was we asked about-
UI six.
UI six, I mean, it says ETC survey asks people if they believe, and then it has a quote, I was just wondering what the whole question was.
Yeah, so the progress indicator is percent of residents who believe their culture is celebrated in the community. In the ETC survey, the question is efforts are made to represent their culture. So instead of celebrate, we said represent, which was something, obviously, we need to fix, it was a small error on our part of using two different words for the progress indicator and for the question itself.
I guess I was focused on the word effort versus, like, do I believe efforts are made to represent my, do I believe efforts are made to represent my culture in the community? Or is it, I believe, you see what I'm saying? The efforts made seems strange to me, like, who's making the effort? Like-
This was not, I'm just explaining-
Yeah.
This was derived from other ETC surveys.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to, what the whole question was.
Language recommended by ETC, but I can, I can look into that, I appreciate that, we can look into that.
I mean, it, it occurred to me that, you know, do I believe my culture is celebrated in the community is different than do I believe there's efforts being made to celebrate my culture in the community? Because efforts made makes you think, well, who's doing it? And are they doing it, and is that a governmental function, or is that a, you know? So I guess, I, I guess I'd want the question to be, do I believe my culture is celebrated in the community, something more direct, but-
Thanks, that's good, helpful.
But I also recognize you don't want to change the question too often, because then you can't track it over time, so I, I mean, I'm-
Yeah, that's part of it.
Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Finkelman. I was wondering where you were going with the first one, I was like, you're going to an, you're going to a closed question, so we don't want to ask it that way. But I'm glad you said, I mean, you, to Steve's point and to the team's point, I think there's a way to, because what we're stating is the indicator, and what was stated on the question didn't align, this being the first year, I don't feel like it, we're without being able to go back in and tweak it. If we said, I believe efforts are made to represent my culture, I think, I don't have any qualms with that, but it goes back to something that Commissioner Finkelman alluded to, that I wanted to talk about. Because this is unmistakable identity, and the survey is indicative of the city, we are asking community members to ask these questions under the auspice that they are thinking about all events that happen in the city, not just events that are sponsored by the city. And so, I know we don't tease that out, and I don't know if it's the intent of us to tease that out, but I think when we, when we see these questions, I mean, when you see answers and you see responses, and the percentage of the responses to this, I did, that was something that came up, so I'm, I'm glad that Commissioner Finkelman teed that up. The seven, on page, in your presentation, page eight at the bottom, the target was 75% going forward. That's 75% BIPOC as an aggregate, as an aggregate, is what I'm assuming, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Kalina, thank you for clearing that up. And I think the other things I have are questions slash comments, so I'll just wait to state them during discussion period, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Any other questions for staff?
Uh, yeah, it's, I guess mine was also a question, kind of comment, question, like, regarding the, the red fonted items and developing marketing strategies and those outreach groups, is there, is that just a precursor to a plan to do that, or to bring on people to properly engage those populations, or they're under, underrepresented parts of our community, or is it just, I, I would, I'm kind of looking for a direction there.
That, it's a really good question. It's interesting delving into this and recognizing, one, where we didn't meet the mark, but, two, where do you go with this? So, for the purposes of this, it is a broad stroke, and you're absolutely right, because immediately, it's, how, how are we going to do that? And I think with my new role, that's something I really want to look into, because I can see how this is gonna overlap with other areas. I went back and looked at the cultural plan as well, and a lot of this stuff was called out in different ways even there. So certainly, there's a lot of room for improvement on this. To Commissioner Sellers' point, I think a key thing, and actually Craig has talked about this too, we're not owning events that we're supporting, so to speak, and not that we should own them, we want to support them with a TGT grant, but we're not really celebrating the fact that we are supporting these events. Freddie Gipp does these amazing pow-wows, you know, and we're not, we're giving him money to help him do that, it's really great, the lead center. So there's events like that, that we need to go back and get that inventory list, and then make sure that we curate it in such a way that when we get those surveys back, and what key questions are we asking, to your point as well, is, you know, do we ask about efforts, or are we saying, do you believe this really fulfilled that, that section of your, your cultural background? So this is, gives us a ripe opportunity to really delve into this. So it's actually good that this wasn't perfect, because now we're going to go back and refine it and make it better. And obviously, with the ETC survey, the over-sampling will likely get better as we move forward with population changes moving forward.
Okay.
So thank you, great questions, really appreciate it.
Porter, a couple of questions, sorry to spark some. Under UI five, we, it was stated that, that 332 was not, was not statistically significant, or at least statistically valid, and that was with the over-sampling. So do we, I can't remember from the presentation, and I couldn't put, I was looking through it, was the sample, was the over-sampling, was that statistically, because I-
That's-
-remember.
That's the key. So, and this is important to understand, again, this is the data we have now, it's workable data, it was a robust, robust solution. Anticipating this, let me reread the over-sampling information, because this is really important. So, over-sampling of demographic groups in the city, this involved over-sampling of minority groups based on race, ethnicity, and income, to ensure the completion of at least 50 additional surveys beyond the number expected, based on the most recently available American Community Survey census information, given the selected group's relative portion of the city's population. I'm gonna read a little bit more, but I want to preface this by pointing out that currently in our over-sampling, or not over-sampling, I'm sorry, the random sampling survey, which had, I think it was 800, I'm trying to remember the number, hang on. Was it 837? Forgive me, I have it down here. Sorry, I thought I had it, but maybe I don't have that number. But anyway, that was the, that was the valid, statistical valid sampling of that, 79% of respondents are white, identified as white. So right there, and then it goes down from there, Asian or Asian Indian is 7%, Black or African American is 5%, American Indian or Alaska Native is 3%, Middle Eastern or North African is 1%, Native Hawaiian or Other Pacific Islander is 1%, and Other is 1%. So it's important to understand that the census data does, you know, affect this, and so the over-sampling gives us good information. What's great is we have a dashboard through ETC, and that's how I was able to go in and delve deeper into this and have a better understanding of the different populations and their response, but it is important that people understand that that is not statistically valid data. So just calling that out for what it is.
No, and I'm glad you did, because I, when I saw that, it triggered, I thought we were statistically valid in our random, in our random sample-
That's correct.
But I didn't know how it would articulate down to-
And that was something Ryan, yeah, Ryan Murray spoke to that as well, is we just have to understand that, and again, going forward, that will hopefully improve and increase as we move forward with population changes.
So how many, I'm sorry, you done, Commissioner? How many records would we need in order to consider, to be considered statistically valid?
That's what, the number I was trying to find here, and I know it's in the data, do you have that?
Is that what you're looking for?
Thank you, there it is, 800, so we had, it had to be over 800, and we had, ended up with 857 households, and that's the, the mark that ETC established for that statistical viability.
Any more questions for staff?
Yes, I know that we have the Committee on Committees that's going through and reviewing our current boards and commissions and structures and functions. Have any of the boards and commissions under unmistakable identity started to have conversations, whether with Dr. Muhammad or Kalina, as far as looking through that equity lens, and not just equity to race, but ableism, culture, gender identity, to review their, their ordinances, their, their bylaws, as far as if, if they feel like it is sufficient, or if there needs to be some amendments done to ensure that representation of underrepresented or underserved communities are part of those boards?
I don't have an answer to that, I have not been involved in that-
I know you haven't, this is-
-process.
That was an Unmistakable Identity team question, so anyone, feel free to answer.
And Derek Rogers, Director of Parks and Recreation, so we have the two boards, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. We have delved a little bit into equity over the last few years, but as it relates to the board charters, we have not. Lawrence Cultural Arts Commission, for the short time that we've been on that commission, I do not recall us doing that yet. I don't know if you had in the past or not, Porter. So I, I would say that answer is no, not yet.
Okay. Because I know that those boards then feed into the TGT Advisory Board, and so, just making some, calculating some thoughts for discussion, but I just said no, if those boards have been active in reviewing their, their charters and ordinances as far as their governing structure or whatnot, so thank you.
No other questions, we'll open it up for public comment? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment online?
Stephen Watts.
Thank you. Sorry it took me a moment to get that hand back up. You know, I gotta say, as I made some notes here, let us curate the reality, I like that word, curate, whatever it means. I like that word, curate, whatever it means. I think I know. But let us create the reality that the bulk of folks who use the Prairie Park Nature Center are not reflected in the data. As the town moves ever so quickly forward to charging for everything, it's just around the corner, although it may have been averted for the very instant moment. At any rate, the stuff that these gentlemen are talking about is all geared towards how many outside dollars does our team bring into our town? Only people with money can go to a travel destination like Lawrence, Kansas. So once again, we are focused on a, a similar group of people that seems to get all of the lion's share of talk, attention. Oh, I'm sorry. The poor people get a little bit of talk, attention in dollars, well, that's another story. When you look at the percentage of how much money is gone, this, that, and the other. But, so anyway, the report that these guys are giving is all about how much revenue do, do we bring into our town? I, I, I just have, I personally, in my own existence here in Lawrence, don't see it that way. I see that we need to focus on helping each other inside the town. I don't believe it means bringing in the dollars to pay the rich people who can trickle down, and I'm being polite because I have some other language I can use, in terms of trickling down. So anyway, very curious report. I appreciate what these guys are doing. I, I agree with it on a marginal basis, however, it is important that, I'm going to say it now, you people start understanding. It is people or money. It's up to you to make the choice. Thank you.
Any other public comment online?
No, Mayor.
Commissioner? So it's nice to see, I'm, I'm excited that our outcome teams are utilizing the ETC data to go back and look at our indicators and, and strategies. That's what we want to see. How do we operationalize the data that we have in order to create those outcomes that our community wants to see? So I'm excited about that. I was, I'm always excited about the ETC presentations. I'd like to see it kind of taken a little deeper. I know that the dashboard that ETC has can probably take it deeper, and I've spoken to the gentleman about that. I know what that, so I know, I know we can do it. When I see numbers like seventy-five percent and it's in an aggregate, that is a good incremental start for us. One of the things that, when I see that number, what that number doesn't tell me is, what does that look like as it relates to gender, gender identity, age? Because we know the population of our community, so we know that we are a, a more aged population than we are in the younger. And so as we look at how we identify events and activities, whether they're cultural, whether they're conventions and things of that nature, how do we start cross-referencing that as to events that are family-focused, events that are youth-focused, events that are within the cultures? Because I think we know who mostly takes these surveys, and I don't want us to get too wrapped up in that and we get this binary tunnel vision thought about how we need to put together our strategy. So while I'm great to see that we need to be intentional about specifying strategies for different groups, we need to make sure that in those groups, we're thinking about gender identity, age as well. And so I, I know that this team is capable of doing that, and so I look forward to, to that happening. You know, I slightly agree, I disagree with Mr. Watts' session of focusing on money and not people. Most of the events that we do in the community are geared towards the people. They are centered here, Busker Fest, whether it's the Old Fashioned Christmas Parade, Juneteenth, Pride, those things are centered for our community with the goal and intent that we can pull people regionally to come here. Our, our Explore Lawrence, our CVB, they just don't look at it from a visitor standpoint or a convention standpoint. They look at it from a day trip, a staycation. So I, I think what we are seeing here is the blossoming of what this unmistakable out, identity outcome team is capable of doing with all the different subgroups that, that within our, within different culture sets that we can, that we can really tap into to, to elevate a lot of the activities and that we're seeing locally with through the art center, our museums, the theater, and our entertainment district, as well as things that are sponsored by the city. But yes, I do agree, we do need to do a better job of, of telling our story and sharing with the community, not that we're giving money to these events and to organizations that we are, that it's not even, I'm only saying allocate or appropriate, that we are supporting. I don't like the tone of we, we give money as if our community is beholden to us. It is their dollars and we're stewards of that. And so we are trying to be good stewards to ensure that all who are, who are representing our community have that access. So this is promising, this is, I think we, we have some ways to go, of course, but that's what everything, but I, I like what this team is bringing in front of us, and they're challenging themselves in that capacity.
Any other discussion on this?
I would only say, thank you for the report, and I guess we haven't said publicly, but Porter, congratulations on moving over to the new position. I think that's a great move, and I was on the hiring committee a long time ago when we hired you on the, as not, you know, when you hired you as the Director of Arts and Culture, and I know you've very, your background is in that, and you were great in that position, so I'm glad to kind of have you back in that similar position. So look forward to you, what you can do in helping us achieve these goals.
I concur. I'm looking forward to great things from you, Porter. Continued great things.
I'm excited. And appreciate what you just said. You're absolutely welcome.
Want to thank staff for the work they're continuing to put into this and their focus on our strategic plan. We continue to stay very focused, and I very much appreciate that. And I would agree with Commissioner Sellers that we do focus on people, that are community members when we are working with the taxpayer dollars, and I just believe we're, we're people focused on that.
Mayor, could I just thank Steve for a minute while he's still there? Not technically a, a city organization, but one of our great partners and, and really grabbed a hold and tried to understand what our strategic plan was and make it work for his organization. And I, whether he likes it or not, hold him up as an example to people who ask me, hey, what does this mean? I don't even quite understand. Yeah, you can, you can really make this yours and, and be part of it, and I just really appreciate you.
All right. Nothing else on this? We can move on to commission items. Anybody have any commission items? Got one. A while back, I believe it was in 2021, we had asked staff to look into possibly doing a landing acknowledgement for Native American land, and I would like to get an update on that from staff, see where we're at with that. Any other commission items? Not, we will move on to the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Wide variety of updates here. First of all, we did receive a, a project update regarding the Injije Wohobe project, and it is continuing to move along with a lot of activity both here and in Council Grove. So that was exciting to report. The, this is a follow-up item on the Safe and Secure Team related to review of ordinances for, for items that are in our ordinances to review kind of for minor offenses and what could be eliminated. That work was done maybe a couple of years ago. The recent Vera report that was, that was, we were given a copy of is something that could stimulate that again. We both, both of the two champions for that area are interested in, in taking that conversation back up again, and we'll be doing that review. Exciting news to renew our ISO one, our very highest ISO rating, Insurance Services Office rating, which does impact insurance rates for people and property owners in our community. So that's a, that's a, was an exciting renewal, not a surprise, but important, and not something that most cities can say. With that, I'll, happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions for Craig?
Craig, with the update from the Safe and Secure Team, it sits here, it, it's noted that the topic should come up again in the next six months, is the idea that we will have an update on this matter from the Safe and Secure Team prior to August? Don't run. Don't stretch a hand.
We just have the Vera report. Back, and so we're going to do a little deep dive into that, their recommendations, look at some of the data that's in it, and that will include some of the previous work. I don't, we want to give ourselves like under-promise and over-deliver, so we think we can get it done within six months, so hopefully we can get it done before then.
Right. Thank you.
Excellent.
Any other questions? Not, we'll open it up for public comment. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment online?
Stephen Watts.
Hopefully audio is functioning. You know, once upon a time, I was on an airplane and I saw a guy reading a book. It had this title, Hope Is Not A Strategy. Woo, that was very poignant for me. And I've stuck with that thought, you know? If you read the book, it's all about salespeople, and salespeople open that they're going to make the sale. But I was expanding it to something larger in my own personal life. Yeah. You know, this safe and secure stuff with the police, for our town of Lawrence, Kansas, Nazi-dressed troops in battle fatigues, complete with one weapon after another, driving around in quasi-half tracks about the streets of Lawrence, Kansas, unable to answer requests for help with parking problems in neighborhoods because there are too many enemy troops rolling around the streets that require these junior GI Joes.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Bring it back to commission. That's it for this. We'll move on to the calendar. Any calendar items? We need to add or note? We can move on to our last item? Amendment, motion?
Move to John.
Second?
Got a first and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is five zero.